We call the meeting to order. I'll begin with the pleasurable agents. I invite you to join us. Roll call. Here. Tonight, we continue our effort to recognize and highlight the outstanding work of the city departments do every day to serve the residents of Fargo. Our team is dedicated to ensure operations run smoothly 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Tonight, we are highlighting the city of Fargo's administrative team. The team includes city administrator, assistant city administrator, strategic planning director, and our commission office staff. Our administrators, Mike Redinger and Brenda Derrick, were tirelessly behind the scenes to bring together the efforts of 22 different city departments. They do an excellent job of communicating with city commission and all the city departments as they help commissioners and the city staff identify priorities for our community. Our strategic planning director, Jim Gilmore, is constantly looking for ways to enhance Fargo's economy and facilitate development to attract jobs to our community. Our commission office staff, led by Kimber Anderson, are truly dedicated to coordinating public meetings, sending out meeting notices and agendas, and tracking meeting minutes. Every day, they are connecting with the residents over the phone or email to help answer their questions or find the right city officials to assist them. In all these ways, the administrative team is pushing the ball forward so Fargo will continue to be a regional leader as we collaborate with neighboring cities and counties. We will now share a video that underscores the work of the administrative team.
So city administration in the organization is really that entity that's trying to unify all of the inputs from the departments. These departments are quite disparate, and so we're trying to make sense of that and trying to unify that so that when we're communicating to the city commission, we are communicating the priorities of these departments, but then also communicating back to the departments what the city commission would really like to see for the community.
So we are a full-time position, and what we really do is we bring that stabilization with all of our department heads and staff. That has been really rewarding, and then also just kind of as we're working cross-departamentally, being able to look at all the different priorities and then how we bring them together to be able to move forward with that vision.
The city commission office is responsible for the city administration office, the strategic planning and research office. We help the city commissioners as well. So we are legally required to send out our agendas. We're also legally required to create meeting minutes from the city commission meetings. The city commission office helps coordinate various meetings within our office space. The city commission office is also a wayfinder for citizens with concerns or questions about various things throughout the community.
Strategic planning involves economic development, trying to bring new jobs to town, as well as trying to redevelop older neighborhoods and bring new development to the downtown. We work with Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC to bring more primary sector jobs to Fargo. That might be a manufacturing company, a distribution company, a medical device manufacturing company, but something that adds high-quality jobs that boosts our economy. It's just kind of fun to come downtown even on a weekend and see these different projects, see more places to park, see new businesses, see vacant buildings become occupied, and I hope we can continue that.
So the city of Fargo is really a catalyst for a lot of regional projects and a lot of big, big-picture thinking in the metropolitan area. So Fargo is going to typically be that home where we talk about things like water supply. We talk about the flood diversion project, the Red River Regional Dispatch Center. You know, we're really the home for a lot of some of that strategic thinking about partnerships across the two counties, the two states, and the multiple cities within this metropolitan area. And so we typically are convening from those conversations, we're hosting those conversations in our spaces, and then also providing that strategic leadership so that we keep things moving forward, not only in Fargo, but in Fargo-Moorhead, West Fargo, and the greater Cass-Clay area.
We do more than just working up here with city commissioners and department heads. We do work with other boards and commissions. You know, working with the HRC with the MLK Day was extremely exciting, and I really enjoyed it.
I have worked for the city of Fargo for 16, almost 17 years. I enjoy the people and the citizens in which I have come to know.
But then with the city, a little over 30 years now, I started as a community development planner, moved on to planning director, and I'm working in administration on these redevelopment projects. I just enjoyed working with the people with the city, working with developers and the people in the community that care about this community and want to make it a better place.
I've been with the city now for 33 years, trained as a civil engineer, and then I was city engineer for a while. And I truly, I do, I truly love working for the city of Fargo and just super proud to work here. And you know, to be honest, working at the city gave me the flexibility as an engineer to be able to raise my family, yet still do what I wanted to do and what I love to do.
So I joined the city of Fargo in 2016. I got a great opportunity to come join this organization as the assistant administrator at the time. And so I've been very grateful, very thankful that this has been an organization that's been home for nearly the last 10 years of my professional career. And to have that opportunity to be able to stay here and to fulfill the city administrator role here has been quite meaningful for me. Very appreciative to the community, very appreciative to my teammates, and we've got a great, great crew here at Team Fargo.
Time goes by fast, doesn't it, Kimber? 16 years, holy cow, good job. Is there a motion to approve the art of agenda withdrawing item 5A from the consent agenda and adding extra item at the end of the regular agenda to present the 2024 Police Department's annual report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 14, 2025 regular meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections or additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 24 excluding item 5A, which has been withdrawn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Regular agenda, presentation by the FM Coalition to End Homelessness and the United Way of Cass-Clay. We have Chandler Esslinger from the FM Coalition, and we have Taylor Severson from United Way of Cass-Clay.
Good evening, great to be with you all. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share an update about the progress that we've made since we've last visited with you on December 23 of 2024. That feels like both a day and three years ago at this point, so we're excited to share some of the updates. I think that we are currently trying to get this computer to start, so give us just a moment while that is in progress. Is there anyone that's able to assist us? The screen is just black, so I can't pull up the presentation.
We'll get you some help.
Thank you. Gremlins. Okay. The seconds that pass when you're waiting for technology to work also feel like years, so thank you for your patience. We greatly appreciate that. We want to make sure that we can share these important updates while also sharing both with the public and you all some of the visual content, because there's this challenge, as you know, is complex. And as we've been moving forward after the past four months, we have had incredible progress. And we're excited to share with you today the progress that's been made, the stakeholders that we've engaged, and what's yet ahead of us. So I'd like to introduce myself again. My name is Taylor Severson. I serve as the Director of Community Impact.
And I'm Chandler Esslinger. I am the Executive Director of the Fargo-Moorhead Coalition to End Homelessness, where our mission is that we work in partnership to achieve permanent solutions to prevent and end homelessness, making it rare, brief, and one time.
And together with our partners at the FM Coalition, we want to share a little bit of the background and historical context about what's led to this initiative that we refer to as United to End Homelessness. So we know over the last couple of years, our community and businesses and the people of this community have called for leadership, strategy, and coordination around our community challenge of homelessness. Late last year, we were called upon by many of those stakeholders to provide some recommendations and begin to help coordinate many of the stakeholders that are involved in this process. We came to know that there were both some immediate things that needed to happen, a short-term set of solution, as well as long-term strategies that were critical for our community to see both forward progress right now, while maintaining that progress over the long term. So we have two identified goals as part of that initial process. Really, first, to minimize the rise in unsheltered homelessness that we know is part of some of the challenges our community is facing, while also building that foundation for our region to have a comprehensive plan to prevent and end homelessness into the future. You'll hear us say the phrase "end homelessness" here today in this room. Maybe you've read it in the paper or heard it on the radio as we've been helping to build the shared definition of what ending homelessness means. And it means that that experience is rare, brief, and one time. We don't believe that that experience will vanish altogether, but instead, we have to ensure that our system is well-prepared to make sure that folks that do enter homelessness are able to exit quickly, and for those that we're able to prevent, we can do that effectively.
And speaking of the system, the homeless response system that supports this work, there are dozens of agencies that represent the diversity, the continuum of services that both prevent homelessness, address the crisis of homelessness, and help people move on to a more permanent situation. So this is a graphic that Taylor and I like to reference. We're talking about that, the homeless response system, that continuum of service providers. And you'll see that it's made up of five different wedges. Outreach and coordinated entry are kind of what we consider the front door to our system. Emergency shelter, a life-saving intervention that ensures that at least some of the folks in our community have a safe place to sleep at night. Supportive housing and rapid rehousing, which are the programs that help people move out of homelessness. Affordable housing and stabilization, which are the physical buildings and supports that people live in as they're exiting out of their crisis. And then prevention and diversion, programs in our community that prevent homelessness and divert people out of the experience of homelessness altogether. We just wanted to remind everybody that there are a number of agencies that support this work across our community. And we wanted to really ground us in that understanding of that system, because there's parts of our system that are overwhelmed, and there are parts of our system that are under-resourced. So on any given night in the Fargo-Moorhead area, we estimate there are about 1,050 individuals experiencing homelessness. And what that means in terms of our overall system is that certain parts of our system, again, are overburdened, overutilized. And so we know for a fact that the programs and agencies that support outreach and coordinated entry or that front door into homeless, into the homeless response system are overwhelmed. They are seeking and finding and serving more people than we have the resources to serve in our community. In addition, we know that emergency shelter is currently overutilized in our community. We estimate that on any given night, there are about 330 shelter beds available across the community, which, if we had those under-resourced parts of our system scaled up to meet the need, we would be able to see, to not, to make, we would be able to see that emergency shelter was serving that need, and we wouldn't have people kind of left to the street because they don't have anywhere else to go. And so prevention and diversion, affordable housing and stabilization, and supportive housing, and rapid rehousing are those parts of our system that need to be scaled up so that we're decreasing the burden on those other parts of the system that are currently overutilized. I wish it was as easy as a click of a button to have all of these elements reach their optimal state, but this is part of what we're trying to do. We're trying to figure out a way to support the agencies that are already doing this work to meet the need, to scale up the services they're providing by stewarding more resources to them, building capacity within their agencies, and then minimizing that burden on the parts of our system that are really taking on the vast majority of that crisis of homelessness in our community. So we also wanted to revisit the 30, 60, and 90-day objectives and their associated goals, with a brief status update that Taylor will dive into a little bit more in just a minute. So first of all, for the first 30 days, we really wanted to accomplish three things. We wanted to initiate some fundraising in order to support that increase in services, that scaling up of services across the community. We wanted to establish a couple of different groups that would allow us to convene the right people in order to consult on who in our community is best positioned to scale up this work and meet the need. And then we also wanted to ensure that we were supporting the, or supporting a pathway to a longer-term strategy to prevent and end homelessness across Cass and Clay counties, which we've accomplished through the stand-up of the Cass-Clay Interagency Council on Homelessness. So although we continue to fundraise, we have been able to meet some of those critical first objectives of establishing that cross-sector group, identifying those key partners and bringing them together. And then over the next 60 and 90 days, we also wanted to, again, begin to stand up an iterative approach to laying the foundation so that we can prevent and end homelessness as a community. So as we've been stewarding these resources, we've identified a plan of the agencies that are best positioned in our community to meet this need, with the overall goal of that being to reduce the rate and number of individuals entering homelessness altogether. So that will be a long-term, in-progress goal for the foreseeable future. We also knew that we needed to activate immediate access to housing units in our community. That's one of the biggest barriers we see to people moving out of homelessness. And so we've been on the process of identifying underutilized housing units in our community, stewarding partnerships with landlords and property managers to ensure that quick, rapid access to housing, and then again, supporting those partner agencies and scaling up those resources through hiring, training, staffing, administrative support, all those other things they need in order to be successful. So these are all things that we're making progress on, and they are currently, and they will be underway for some time. And then similarly, the last two things that we had identified in our 60 to 90-day plan was again, preparing for that wind down of winter warming programming and shelter overflow operations that we see scale up during the winter, really to prevent the return of homeless camps as much as possible, but also to address any unsheltered homelessness that is existing in our community right now. And then, again, thinking more long-term about what it takes to prevent and end homelessness as a community, we will continue to engage sectors that interact with the homeless response system to ensure that nobody is discharging from an institution or an emergency room directly onto the street, and that'll be something we'll accomplish with our Cass-Clay Interagency Council.
So we know that although we've set these 30, 60, and 90-day goals, that's really laying the foundation for what this work is going to look like, both to address the short-term solutions that we need to activate quickly and the long-term strategy. So we want to kind of expand the activities that fall within each of those objectives. What Chandler and I have been doing, scurrying around this community and the region, making sure that we've been educating folks, activating folks, moving into implementation and maintenance as we move forward over the next few months. So I want to walk through kind of this development phase. What have we been doing to develop the infrastructure and the resources we're going to need to keep this work moving sustainably? After that, we'll talk a little bit about some of the assessment that needed to happen. How do we understand what the best next step is? We need to understand the people and the resources available to do that work effectively. After that, Chandler will discuss what implementation looks like and some of the things that we've been doing to meet those objectives as well. So now we're talking about really the activities that have happened to help us meet those both short-term and long-term objectives. So we have had, you'll see some little buttons throughout the next couple of slides where we have either completed something, it is on track and in progress, or something is up ahead, and it's something that we'll be tackling next. So in this development phase, a really critical part of our work has been building buy-in, shared definitions, and community understanding. You all have been very generous with your time and with access to many folks to make sure that we can together build community awareness and educate those key stakeholder groups. Over the last two and a half months, we've held more than 14 educational events with business and civic leaders and community members. This equates to more than 250 individuals who have a direct or indirect role to play in helping us to address homelessness. We've also held at least monthly media and public communication efforts that have allowed us to continue to bring the shared definition and shared understanding of homelessness to the broader community. We have been able to identify those key partners who are alongside us in leading this response. This means that 15 steering committee members have been walking alongside this work that represent social service providers, homeless response providers, as well as other organizations who are deeply engaged in the service provision directly to people experiencing homelessness. You'll see here on the screen a list of the service providers that we've activated, and there are also several of those steering committee members who are represented in the audience with us here today. We really appreciate their support in this work, and it truly is a system-wide approach. We've spent more than 20 hours over the last couple of months in coordination with one another. And as you all know, getting that many folks together on a regular basis to make really big decisions and discern how we move forward together is tricky. So we're very appreciative for the collaborative and cooperative time we've spent with these incredible steering committee partners. Also as part of the development phase is fundraising. So as you know, United Way has been leading some of the financial capacity and financial resources it will take to continue to move this work forward. We set an initial goal of at least $2.5 million to help support those short-term objectives over 12 to 18 months. The short-term objectives that we're referring to now and throughout this presentation is ensuring that the 55 to 65 individuals who are currently being served by temporary winter programming do not enter unsheltered homelessness at the end of that programming. And so it's been really critical that we are very hyper-focused on preventing additional risk for those individuals who are already incredibly vulnerable. This has meant that we've had to really assess and project what is it that this project is going to need at large. Over the next 12 to 18 months, we've used some modeling from other similar types of programs. We've also used our superpower of strategy and strategic thinking in fundraising to help us understand what are we going to need in addition to United Way's current investment in preventing homelessness with our partners. And then finally, that means that we have been all over town, all over the region, in one-on-one meetings with many business and civic leaders. We've completed, scheduled, or planned at least 30 meetings to conclude by about midsummer. I mentioned some assessment that was really critical, and what this means is that we really needed to assess the staff needed, client needs, what are their unique individual needs, as well as the housing stock available to meet those individual needs. So through our steering committee process, we've been working to assess the homelessness response system. Where are the gaps? What is overburdened, what is underutilized, or under-resourced, rather? And then developing that shared plan for those short-term solutions. This collective impact and collective buy-in process, again, takes time and is very iterative, and we're really proud of the progress that the steering committee has made in coming together on a shared vision for this, how we move forward. That has meant that the individuals in temporary programming have all had what's referred to as an HPT or Housing Prioritization Tool. It's an assessment for the individuals who are staying in temporary programming. That assessment tells us a lot of information about how to best meet that individual's needs. We also have conducted a housing stock feasibility and prioritization process specifically for this population as we think about what are the right types of housing supports needed for those individual needs. And then finally, we have worked with the steering committee to together identify who those organizations are, as Chandler mentioned, who are best positioned to support the new programming. We're going to take a lot of brains and a lot of brain power to build the right path forward, and it's meant that we've been able to collectively have deference to the organizations that are best positioned or best suited at that specific type of programming.
And now that we've done that development and assessment of the system, the clients and what they need, and how best we can move people from a non-permanent situation into a more permanent, long-term housing situation, we move into the implementation phase. And the implementation phase really is two-pronged, both in terms of our short-term strategies and goals and those long-term strategies and goals. And so in progress right now, we are identifying those housing options for those individuals at risk of unsheltered homelessness and those who are currently experiencing unsheltered homelessness in our community. Currently, we've been able to identify about 22 housing units that are currently not being used in our community to serve this particular population. But we know that we need more than that. In order to serve that 55 to 65 individuals, we'll need about 40 to 50 additional housing units. And those conversations and negotiations are currently in process to identify where in the community do we need additional housing units? What's close to transportation, and what is going to be the best fit for our target population? In addition, we are continuing to increase those staff resources and supports for this new programming and increasing that system capacity so that it's both supporting agencies who've been identified to support this work in embedding these staff within their own programs while focusing on this collaborative initiative. So many different agencies, several different agencies, will be hiring staff in order to support this work. We're developing those job descriptions and the supervision structure because it is kind of unique to have these different positions embedded within different agencies, but we wanted to ensure we weren't burdening one particular agency with those staffing positions. We really wanted this to be an equitable process, leveraging the strengths of each of those individual organizations. So the tier-one staff, the folks that we anticipate being able to hire on within the next month, include a program coordinator, a team lead, and one case manager. And then we also know that in order to continue to scale up to meet that 55 to 65 goal of folks we plan to serve, we'll need up to five additional case managers. And so this really piecemeal iterative process is largely dependent on our fundraising goal and strategy. So we know June 1, we'll be able to have about 22 units come online and those first, first three staff in order, in place, in order to support this initiative moving forward. And then second, we also are moving into the implementation phase of some of those longer-term strategies. So we have been able to develop that planning infrastructure for our long-term community strategy, the Cass-Clay Interagency Council on Homelessness, as you've heard us mention a couple of different times. That includes seven jurisdictions, Fargo, Moorhead, West Fargo, Dilworth, and Horace, as well as Cass and Clay counties, who all came together to support the joint proclamation announcing our region's commitment to ending homelessness. And we will be kicking off that plan and convening that group in early June. So those invitations and the applications for at-large members will be coming out very soon. And so that's really a comprehensive overview of what we've been able to achieve so far. But we wanted to dive in just very briefly to what the Cass-Clay Interagency Council on Homelessness is meant to do or why we would have one. We did a lot of exploration across the nation to see how communities have aligned multiple sectors, multiple jurisdictions across community borders and government agencies to determine how best to align all of this work. And what we found is that agencies that have replicated an interagency council process have been really successful in being able to maximize their community's resources and see that systematic and sustained reduction in homelessness over time. So we have modeled this approach after other successful communities who've seen those reductions, but we do not know of any community across the nation that has over seven different government bodies among all of the different sectors and all of these different borders coming together to focus on this issue in particular. So it is a novel So it is a novel, a unique approach that we're taking in our community. So this is also an overview of kind of how this structure is meant to work. You'll see at the bottom, the lead agencies are the United Way of Cass-Clay and the FM Coalition to End Homelessness. And we really serve as that backbone, planning and coordinating and facilitating group to help support the work of both our steering committee and advisory councils in the actual implementation of those short and long-term goals and strategies. So with that, we would actually really like to bring up Jen Fall, the Director of Public Health, and Chief Zabolski to share an update from their respective departments about the progress that they are making and how we have been collaborating together around this June 1st kind of initiative launch for our first phase.
Thank you, Chandler. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Learning and working with the Coalition-
Could you put the mic closer to you, please, Jen?
Thank you. Working and collaborating with the United Ten Homelessness Initiative, we were aware of previously the time in the bridge of time that was needed to fill from the ending of our April 30th timeframe for the winter warming and the onset of them having more units available and identified. We've talked previous to the meeting about needing a one-month time gap fill to bridge those services, so that we would not be leaving people unsheltered. We have a suggestion to extend or bridge that gap utilizing the current services as they are at Fargo-Cass Public Health, using the winter warming staffing and space, continuing that until June 1st for just sheltering purposes at night. The cost for that would not be absorbed by the city or the general fund. We have grant availability to pay for the salaries of the staff to do that. And at the current time, we have roughly 45 people still utilizing that service as of last night.
You're not extending the camping, you're just having the area to shelter people at night until you have enough places?
Correct.
And Chandler, you have 22 spots so far, and you're trying to get to 50? Is that what the issue is?
Correct.
Okay. And you have funding to take care of this?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
That's all I needed to say.
Oh.
I have nothing further to add, unless you have some questions on that.
We've been working with them on the camping. We will start noticing tomorrow and moving campsites on Thursday. So we're already set up with Public Works and Parks to work on that end of it once the-
Can you just explain to the public, you have to give a 48-hour notice, and we can't enforce till after May 1st?
Right. So the 48-hour notice will start tomorrow, so enforcement will start on the 1st Thursday.
Any questions by the Commissioners? Mr. Turnberg?
I'm a little unclear, Jen, what you're requesting, since there wasn't anything on the agenda, what exactly it is that you're extending.
I'm making a suggestion that we can continue to utilize that space and staff and services without it costing the city to do anything. Our current operation was scheduled to end on April 30th with camping ordinance.
So where you're doing the warming, are you going to have people sheltered for the month of May? Is that correct?
Correct.
So Mr. Chair, I'm confused. It was a winter warming program, and now it's April? And we've extended it how many times? Two times, for sure? It's time to restore law and order. It's time to return the bike trails to the kids and families. It's time to quit destroying our riverfront. The time's up. Time's up. We've had enough. Citizens have had enough. It's time to restore law and order, so the campsites have to go.
They're not asking the campsites to remain. What they're asking is to have a place for the people who don't have a place to stay right now, to stay in shelter area at the public health where it's at. Camping's going away. The chief is going to enforce it, that that's all done. But to your point on trying to make the bike pass, that's exactly what we'll do. We'll enforce that and have that happen. It's just that Chandler, we've been raising money for United Way, and you are continuing to raise money, but you don't have 50 places. You have 22 places ready. And so there will be a gap. There'll be a gap of 30 to 40 people that otherwise will be on the street. So that's what the idea is. Commissioner Strand.
Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Pepcorn, I'll help. As I understand it, this is going to restore law and order by not putting people out onto the riverbanks and out into the streets in this next month. What we're doing is, as I hear it, you're extending the winter warming location at the Public Health Building, nothing to do with camping. The camping, as I understand it, is staying in place. Beginning May 1, they're getting notices, they're gone. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. We also, though, don't want to have a... I'll go back a little further. I can't begin to thank our people enough. We have not had a single person freeze to death. We have had 50-some people routinely every night in housing for winter warming. Where would they be? They'd be freezing. We would be dealing with different issues. So we need to commend our staff and our people in our community for that amazing success, that quantifiable result of saving lives. Okay? I'm all for, I'm not for extensions, 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 and extensions, but if it takes us another month to continue this program and not be putting people out in the street, if we can give them a place to sleep at night that's warm, why wouldn't we?
Mr. Turnberg?
It's interesting, and when we were discussing this in December, didn't you say, Commissioner Strand, that there was one camp? And now we have how many people that were looking to house?
There's 50, roughly 45 to 51.
And why is that? So we just had 50 people come back now that the weather's nice?
No, they've been in winter warming. That's why we put them there, is so they wouldn't be in camps.
I don't, this isn't even, this is not a homeless problem. This is chronic drug use, chronic alcoholism and mental health. That's our troubles. Those are the people suffering. When we, I don't even like the word homeless anymore, because that's not the problem. It's the drug use, and it seems like Fargo, we are more prioritizing safe illegal drug use than we are getting rid of it and stopping it. I mean, we hand out the needles, we hand out the Narcan. They come here because Moorhead doesn't allow it, so then everyone comes to Fargo. I mean, we have to put a stop to it. Let's put that money that we're enabling drug use into housing.
Mr. Chair, so the one thing that's happening, all of our services are in downtown Fargo, and so we're becoming a magnet. And so what's happening is now we're losing businesses. The people that own the businesses are losing their businesses. People are losing their jobs because of the businesses that are closing. The customers aren't coming downtown, because they don't want to deal with being harassed. And so the businesses are, they're leaving. And so that's what's happening. And so we have to stop enabling. That's what we're doing. All of these services, you can go down the list, they're in the downtown, and common sense tells you, that's not where they should be. But yet, that's wherever they are. We have to stop this. And if we don't stop it, it'll just continue. And the other thing we're doing now is, we're becoming the regional hub. We're drawing people, this isn't Fargo citizens. They're people from all over the region that come here for free services, paid for by our taxpayers. So we're funding our own demise. How sad is that? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Not only are we funding our own demise, this is being discussed getting money from the state, and I've been told by legislators that there's an expectation that we will take in people from across the state, should they give Fargo money. So it will just continue to grow.
30% of the people who come to our services are from across the state. That's what they've been told, the legislative body. Both Pepcorn and Turnberg, you've requested that we have other people at the table. We're trying to have the state come at the table and help fund this, because it's people from all over the state that come to our services. So the idea is that maybe the state should carry part of that burden. Governor is very supportive of that. The people we serve, 40% are mentally ill, 40% have addiction issues, and 20 or 30% are just people that are homeless. So the reality is, the people we serve, the people in our community, 70% are from our community. So either we address the problem, if you don't shelter them overnight or do something with them overnight, they'll be on the streets. They're not going to camp, because they can't camp anymore. So the only place they can do is sleep on the sidewalk, sleep in Broadway Square, sleep somewhere in the downtown area. So to Commissioner Pepcorn's concern, that'll be worse. That will cause more problems for our downtown businesses. If we try to, it's just taking time, as we know, in which we have multiple partners now engaged, multiple partners engaged to help us solve this and have this as something we solve. This is a national issue. This isn't just Fargo. This is all over the country. We either address it, or it becomes a bigger problem. And it will be a bigger problem if we don't do something about it, at least overnight shelter. So Commissioner Colpeck.
So thank you, and bear with me, because I feel like I'm going to talk about this kind of real-time. I didn't know the formal request was coming for this bridge for extending winter warming as part of this presentation tonight. So I wanted to just say a couple of things. Yes, this homeless problem is the result of a number of factors around behavioral health and mental health issues. And it's complex. And working now, this different approach of public-private nonprofit, everyone owning the issue, that has the expertise to really find the long-term solutions, I think, is the long-term solution to this very complicated problem. Having said that, I will support a bridge of one more month of housing at night, understanding that progress will continue to be made on the housing situation, and we've got the leadership now that is truly driving this, along with the support of respective resources for this reason. The cost to taxpayers by this consuming in the next month, our police department, our fire department, all of the works, all of the work that Public Works has done, the health department and the work that's happening there, that cost would be much greater than extending another two to three weeks of housing in the evening utilizing a grant that exists today. So I support that practically. That impact is much less than we would see on Public Works. And yes, we would see, we would see more people downtown, and we would have more and more issues. I do think maybe a lesson learned from this approach tonight was not being very clear in the agenda that this request was going to be made tonight. I think we missed an opportunity. I think we missed an opportunity to bring taxpayers along. I think we missed an opportunity to bring the downtown community partnership along and other businesses, and even internal staff to bring along. So I would hope that as we continue to build that trust with public-private relationships and partnerships, as we work really hard to find solutions and resources and funding to solve for this, that the trust continues to be built and we continue to be transparent. So that would be my request, and certainly a learning lesson for me in all this.
Mr. Strand?
Go ahead, over there.
Mr. Turnberg?
Is it even legitimate to bring forward this request without it being on the agenda? I know there, I got a text five minutes before a meeting from high-profile business owners downtown that were outraged that this was going to continue. I'm, it's like, we don't have anything on the agenda for that.
There could be a motion, because it's an item that's brought forward whenever any item is brought up. Brendan went on vacation, maybe it would have been better if we had a motion. But I think, Jen, your motion be, you're calling it different than warming, you're calling it-
Just this ongoing sheltered space utilization. There's not really a name for it.
So sheltering for another, extended for another month, right? Covered by a grant. So the motion would be to cover the sheltering for one month, right?
Correct.
Do I have a motion?
I saw move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with another comment.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Go ahead, pressure Colpeck.
I just want to add, be very clear that I support the ordinance that bounds camping. That is not being extended here. This is very much a bridge, as we work with the nonprofit and community partners and businesses, and in good faith, that we will get there. So I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so this isn't on the agenda, correct?
It is on the agenda, it's right here.
Show me where the agenda, there is this suggested motion. Show me that.
Commissioner Pepcorn, you've often brought it up to the Commission, same way, which is an item that's brought forth, and if the Commission has a solution, a motion can be made. Mr. Strand?
Mayor, I... You're all right. Nobody's asking to extend the camping here. Nobody wants to extend the camping. So we're in agreement on that.
Yes.
Nobody up here wants to not try, find a solution for this problem, which has just really landed at home on so many fronts. I mean, we all want to find a solution. Nobody wants people to die out there in the elements. You know, so we have this balance to strike. I just think that we, without, and then, nobody doesn't want the state to help us find, fund this. And nobody doesn't want the collaborative event efforts of the multi-jurisdictions. We all want all of that. You know, all, as I understand it, what's being asked here is to simply allow people at nights to stay in the facility we've been letting them stay in at night. So they're not somewhere out there. It's a pretty, that's all this is. It's nothing to do with any of those other DEC or deflection centers, or state fundings, or mental health, behavioral health, addictions, issues at all. This is just simply a request by our people to let this continue for one more month, so we have people under a roof at night, about 50 people per night. That's a chunk of some towns in the city-state. You know, so I just, I know this is an emotionally charged issue, but this is a simplified, boiled-down, moment-present approach for one more month for people at night. It's all, you know, I think our emotions are convoluting all these other topics. But this is the only topic right now that we're looking at. We're all in agreement on all those other fronts. And the fact that we're going to get, hopefully nothing moves fast enough, but that we're going to get some assistance. And I believe that the collective efforts of everybody will deliver that. But this is only for an extension for nighttime protection for about 50 people.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, the agenda item that we're on now is number 25, Presentation from the FM Coalition to End Homelessness and the United Way of Cass-Clay. That's the agenda item that we're on. And we keep hearing how important it is to listen to the people and have time for a public comment. This wasn't on the agenda. We should have had the opportunity for the public to come and comment on it. It's not even on the agenda. So whatever you say about, oh, it's okay, it's not okay. That's not appropriate. It should have been on the agenda. If you're going to make that, put it on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Aye.
Colpeck?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Turnberg?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing 26 withdrawn its appeal on the conditional use for telecom support structure. The Park Board pulled that off and is no longer going to allow the telecom structure in Mickelson Park. Item 27, Circum Park Third Edition. So approval recommended by Planning Department on 10/1/24, zoning change from agricultural to single-dwelling residential and public and institutional. First reading by the rezoning ordinance, a plot of the Circum Place Third Edition. Donald Kress to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress with the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next two items. Both these items included ordinance prepared by the City Attorney's Office. As the mayor stated, our first item here is Selkirk Place Third Edition. It's located here in an undeveloped area south of the existing Selkirk Place additions. Just for reference here, this is Drain 53, 64th Avenue South, Davies High School. So, you know, come down in. Our new fire station is right up here, too. And the proposal here is a subdivision and a zone change. Site looks like this. It is currently undeveloped. These, this is the 64th Avenue crossover over here. You see, there is some development in the adjacent Selkirk Place Second Edition. And this gravel road here is the approximate location of 67th Avenue South, which will be the north boundary of this subdivision. And here, again, just another view, here's Drain 53 along the west or east side of the property. That's not part of the subdivision, but it's there. And this is actually from across Drain 53. This is where 67th currently ends. And you'll see it will continue across the drain eventually and connect to the Selkirk side. Subdivision plot looks like this. There are 143 lots, 142 single-family lots, and then one park lot, which includes a stormwater detention facility. The zoning, current zoning is agricultural, in the gray. And the proposed zoning here would be SR4, single-dwelling residential for the residences, and PI, public and institutional, for the park. This park will be owned by the Fargo Park District. So, and they have been- So, and they have been working with us and the developer to develop the appropriate facilities and trail connections for that park. The applicant's representative, John Yunus, of Eaglebury Development, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Is there anyone present wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpeck?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearing, 28, Golden Valley Sixth Edition. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 4-125. Zoning change from single-dwelling residential to single-dwelling residential, SR5. First reading the rezoning ordinance, Donald Kress also to explain.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our next location is, if the houses weren't there, it would be in sight of our last item, which is across the drain here. This is 67-88, 27th Street South. This is in the Golden Valley Sixth Edition. You see this is platted as a larger lot, so it's not intended just for one single-family use. Here are a couple of views of it. The, the space is actually in here, the, the houses surround it, where they've stacked up the, the building materials and the dirt. That's where the property is there. And here's a view coming from the other direction. This is facing south, this is facing east. Interestingly, this is on the corner of 27th and 28th Streets, a rare intersection where you have two streets come together. The current zoning is SR4, and the proposed zoning is SR5. And the applicant's point in requesting this is the density. The lot is .9 acres. At the SR4 density, they could get 10 dwelling units. They want to have a development with 11 dwelling units. The way to do that is to change the zoning to SR5. There is a similar zone change that's actually kitty-corner across the development up here. Again, a large lot platted along with the similar, or smaller, single-family lots. That's in place, that's been there for about a year and a half. That looks like this. And so the applicant's proposal, same developer, is again, something like this, two fourplexes and a threeplex in the corner of the neighborhood there. The applicant's representative, Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. The planning commission's recommendation is stated in the staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
So Donald, will they be townhomes or condos, or what?
Mr. Patengale could probably tell us the story on that, sir.
Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering. They are intended to be rental units. So it's attached housing, attached housing, like bi-level splits, or tri-level splits, I believe, but attached townhome units.
And then how many bedrooms per unit, basically?
I don't know. I think a lot of them are two units, two-bedroom or three-bedroom. I'd have to actually look at the plans, but all of them are two-bedroom, I believe.
So that would open up your rental market to people, families?
Correct.
Basic, okay. So anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning? Anybody present wishing to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Colpeck?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Donald. Application for Class F alcoholic beverage license for Nicole's Fine Pastry. Doing business is Nicole's Fine Pastry Cafe to be located at 13th 8th Street South. And Steve, you'd be so kind to explain an F license as you explain this, please.
Sure. The Class F is a full alcohol license. Does require that food sales exceed alcohol sales, and it does not allow a physical bar. So the alcohol has to be mixed, poured in a room that's separate or away from the area that it's consumed. With this application, next door, the building next door to Nicole's Fine Pastry became available, and, you know, anytime you have an opportunity to control your neighborhood, you, you do that. And so Nicole looked at that and said, you know, her business has been really good at the, at the location she's been at, and just looked at this as an opportunity to expand. She currently has a wine license, which is our G license, and they, she did fail one alcohol compliance check a few years back. Other than that, the recommendation from the Liquor Control Board and the Police Department is for approval.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this application? Anybody present wanting to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, but Steve, I was under the impression it's almost dinnertime. I thought you were gonna bring some things from Nicole's Fine Pastry's for us to try.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Strand.
I, I'm, just for the sake of disclosure, I, my business does a lot of work with Nicole's. I would not profit from this in any way personally, but if that's an issue, anybody can let me know, but I, I don't think it's a, a real disqualification.
Nancy, do I have to have the commission vote on his ability to vote?
No.
Can you, do you also have to say if you eat a lot of Nicole's Fine?
He could vote if he'd like to, then.
Yes, it does not, it does not appear he would have a substantial material pecuniary interest in the, in the alcohol.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn? Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpeck?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public application for B-limited alcoholic beverage license at STL in North Dakota. Target Wine and Liquors to be located southeast corner of 32nd Street and Alexander Drive. It's continued from the 3-31st meeting. Mr. Steve, spray.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So on the 31st of, of March, we brought this forward and asked for a little more time for us to consider exactly what it was that, that we were approving here, and also because the B-limited has a, is a capped license, we don't have more of those available, and we had more applications that were in, and we just wanted to kind of have the time to talk through some of the ramifications of that. You know, B-license is our off-sale license. The limited part is because we are now, we have the license cap, but we add to the cap every time the city population grows by 10,000 people. And so the, the concerning part was that they're not planning on opening until May 27th. So if we grant this license, yeah, May of 27, not May 27th. So if we grant this license, it's essentially gonna sit on the shelf until that time period, right? And so our concern was, well, what happens if they, you know, let's say the market changes and, and they decide, you know, we're not gonna build till 2030. Okay, then what, you know, what rights does the, does the city commission have? Well, at our last meeting, we talked about setting up a, putting the six-month ordinance in place, and Nancy's working on that. And so what we'd be looking at with this would be May of 27, and then plus six months. And if they weren't open by that time, then the city would have the ability to take that license back. So...
Well, the other thing concerns is Jim, Gilmore showed us a new list, which Target's cutting back, and Fargo was not on the list. So have you heard anything from the company that they may not be building?
They, when they first applied for this license, they were on that list that shows that Target, or it showed Fargo being on there. Once they applied, they took that name off the list, took Fargo off, considering that they're already down that process. So when my conversations with them about what this timeframe would look like, they indicated that the next step after the approval of the license would be to start working on permitting and plating. They said that that process could take six months or so, and then a 15 to 18-month build. And so that would put them right into the, the May of 27 time range. So I would say that by, you know, a six-month time period, we'll know whether or not they've pulled permits and whether or not they've started digging in the ground.
You made by Dan, that one, thank you. Mr. Strand.
Thank you. If, if it's a 15, 18-month build, they could start tomorrow and still just barely make this in the time they're asking for.
They haven't applied for any permits at this point, so, but you're correct, yep.
So my question is this, and bear with me, did you say there are others that would be applying for this license if it were available to them?
I have had a local business that approached me about whether or not his business would qualify for a license. That's one. They have not yet applied, but indicated that he was ready to apply. You know, whether or not, whether or not that's true or not, I don't know. Then there is another case where we have an annexation where they would like to get a city of Fargo license.
So that, this award would preclude them from having an opportunity to, if it were already granted into the future, a year and a half?
Yes, that, that's correct. At this time, that would take that license off and put it on the shelf.
I'm just a little uncomfortable with that. I don't know, you know, if somebody should get a year and a half to, to, to get in line to get something that much. I just don't know. Commissioner Pepcorn, that's your committee. Your board.
Commissioner Pepcorn.
That's correct. Commissioner Strand, and so the other thing is, our population is growing, and so there is a potential to add some licenses. So I would say that your point is true about the six-month that we're gonna be monitoring, but I would say if we had an additional B request, that is something that we could consider and then refer it on to us. So I would say that, I agree with you that you don't want to tie something up that would hurt another business, but I think we would have ways to, to look at that in other ways, if that makes sense to you.
Might I continue? To, to clarify, your board recommended this?
Yep.
And you know, unanimously?
Yes, and we, but we did have this same discussion, and so, and actually, what, what we talked about, the six-month review, so we've, we've discussed the same thing, so I, I would say we're on the same page.
We, one of the things we've never discussed, Mr. Strand, is, is the 10,000 the right number? Is it 8,000? Is it 9,000? Is it 10,000? That's just been a number that historically we've always had, but the also, that forgets a little bit about the demographics of the city, right? If you're in South Fargo, how many liquor shops do you have? Well, Happy Harry's is next to that, so it's kind of, we'd have never done it by quote "location" or geographic or whatever thing like that goes, but that might be something, again, and this commission has always been flexible. If a good, good story comes up, we sometimes will approve things, but that would be a discussion in the future. But to the point now, Nancy's drafting the six-month. This will come back to us in six months?
This application?
Yes.
They're telling us that they won't open until May of 2027, so we would add the six-month to the end of that, May of 2027. If they haven't opened by then, then that, that needing to sell alcohol on a continuous basis would come into play.
One of the questions I would ask on that then, Steve, is can we have the caveat that they cannot sell it to anybody else? It comes back to the city? Or is this one of those licenses, if they held, they could sell it to somebody else?
So this license would come back to the city?
We would not, they'd not go to the free market?
That's correct.
To the point where John made somebody else want to buy a license, they kind of go to Target and buy it if they don't build?
That's correct.
Okay. Did I do the public hearing already?
I know you did not.
Okay. Is anybody in the public who wishes to speak to this license? Anybody in the public who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Strand.
Just going further, if we get a sense that they're not going to implement this in, in a timely fashion, we need immediate notice. We don't need to wait till the very 11th hour and find out that they're not doing it and preclude anybody else from having that window of opportunity.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpeck?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Forestry Department. Scott Lindahl's gonna give us a report, and boy, am I glad to see you guys back out again because there's trees and stuff that come down with storms, and it's nice to get rid of those branches.
Well, the wind blows and it keeps us busy. I know that. Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Scott Lindahl, city forester. Appreciate the opportunity to share this brief, brief update. 51 years ago is when the forestry division was first established. Our main priorities now, public safety, tree health, insect and disease management, tree maintenance, reforestation, and planting. Bit about our budget and staff. Right now, if you're a single residential home here in Fargo, you pay $5.98 per month towards that utility fee. It varies a little bit more when it comes to multiple, multi-unit, commercial and mobile home communities. This year's budget, approximately $3 million. We've got a staff of 13 full-time, and anywhere from six to 12 part-time during the, during the summer months. I have to toot the tree's horn a little bit here. I can't not. The left side, the city Minneapolis partnered with the U.S. Forest Service several years ago to take a look at what are these mature trees providing in benefits and services. They wanted to quantify it, and they did. Energy savings, stormwater mitigation, air quality, carbon sequestration, property value. That mature American elm tree is, is contributing $94, a little over $94 annually in benefits and services. And so when you compare larger communities especially, what they're spending on their urban forestry programs, basically every dollar invested in the community, that tree is giving out $2 in benefits. So it actually shows that trees do pay us. Right now, our street populations, a little over 61,000, that we are responsible for managing. The top four species, ash, elm, linden, and maple. We are extremely fortunate to still have over 5,600 of these large, mature American elms that line our street, our, our streets, mostly in the mature parts of town. If you go to the east part of the country, a lot of these elms were, were taken out. And when I mentioned that 51 years of age, 1974, when we started up, it was actually Bismarck, Grand Forks, and Fargo that kind of started at the same time. And what, what jumpstarted it was the Dutch elm disease arrival, which was confirmed in Mandan in 1969. So these larger communities actually hired a forester to try to get ahead of the, the disease and figure out how to try to manage it. The top five that are in bold are our main responsibilities, risk management, insect and disease management, planting, pruning, and public education. Reforestered, annual Arbor Day celebration, land development code, partnerships that we maintain, and our residential brush chipping program are also part of our activities, but the top five are our core responsibilities. Number is 2024. Little over 3,000 tons of, of chips were generated. We pruned over 9,200, a little over 9,200 trees. We planted 1,300-plus, a little over 700 removals, mostly due to Dutch elm disease and our, our uptake in our ash diversification efforts in preparation for Emerald Ash Bor. Again, those core responsibilities for our full-time staff, obviously hazard mitigation and risk assessments, disease, insect management, tree maintenance, planting, and public education. This, this will actually be 30 years of a, of a residential brush chipping program in some format, and last year, the program cost a little over $250,000 to run it for the six months, May through October. This year, actually started next month. This is a seasonal program, and so it is staffed with seasonal staff. And typically, towards the end of August, we start losing staff. And what's gonna happen for, starting in 2025, is we'll run the program first of May through the last full week of September, and this will really model what the city of Morehead does with their regular program now, is how they run it. And this will allow our full-time staff to continue to focus more on our core responsibilities. And it's important to note that residents will have, will continue to have the option of hauling their brush and debris to the landfill year-round for disposal free of charge. Questions, comments?
I was too short. You did a nice job. Thank you, Scott.
I did say brief.
Yes. Any questions, Scott? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Scott. I'm just curious, are we a canopy city? I think we were going to a few years ago, if I remember right.
We completed a canopy assessment probably two or three seasons ago, or two or three years ago. We used, Houston Engineering actually helped. We partnered with them on, on that project, and overall, we were 15% canopy. That's not, certain neighborhoods are quite a bit less, but overall, as a community, it came out to be on average 15%. And when you look around and compare that to other communities, some are better, some and compare that to other communities, some are better, some are worse. There's definitely room for improvement for us.
Did we get the designation as a canopy city?
No.
Is that something we still could maybe look at someday?
Potentially.
You know, here's another question. I'm not sure if it was Minnesota or where. There's some, I believe, some canopy city that had a major federal grant coming to them. They ordered their trees, and then the money was pulled from them. Are we, is this all local money? Is there any federal money involved in this that we do, or?
For the canopy assessment?
For any of your department right now with trees and canopy and replanting and?
Most of it is internal funding.
Okay.
With our budget. We do have a grant coming this year from the North Dakota Forest Service via some of the IRA funds that were that were set aside last year from the federal government. There is some of that still still out there. And we're still secure with our projects for this year. It really focuses on underserved areas of the community, federally designated underserved areas. We do have one area that we are focusing on this year.
Keep an eye on that money.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job. Item 32, reminder that camp in public park property and rights away at the end of April 30, 2025. Commissioner Pepcorn to comment.
No, I just I appreciate that having on the on the agenda. Obviously, we already discussed this. But just so people are aware, it starts on April 30. So it's a couple days away. And so just so people are aware, I am looking forward to it, being able to ride on the bike trails along the river and have kids and families be safe down there. It's going to be a great thing. And obviously, it's going to look a lot better than having a bunch of garbage piles. So I thank you for putting on the agenda. And I think it'll be a good first step for returning our downtown and our city to the law-abiding citizens.
Mayor, just one second.
Mr. Strand?
Commissioner Pepcorn, this is part of my portfolio. And I believe you are accurate technically that we should have we should have noticed that motion in our agenda that we advanced. And I knew it was coming, but I didn't know if it was or wasn't on the agenda. We can slide by technically and say, yes, it was an agenda item, which can spin off other motions. But you it's a it's a valid point, Commissioner Colpak, too, to let the public know the actions we're looking to take. Just acknowledge that.
We do have one speaker for this item that's on the agenda to speak. Olivia Fisher is offline. Do we have that set up?
Hi, yep. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. The same rules on the item 2.3, right?
What was it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Olivia. I'm a Fargo resident. I'm really not understanding why this is the decision you are all accepting and embracing. You were presented the facts multiple times from multiple people that criminalizing homelessness is not effective. Banning camps is not going to suddenly eradicate homelessness. There are plenty of people who cannot access the shelters for one reason or another. Many do not feel safe or respected at the shelters, and the beds are frequently full. What gives you the right to say that they shouldn't have no other option? While it is great that there is progress being made to help people get into housing, it is clear that this is a hefty work in progress. It was mentioned earlier that there won't be a solid team and units available until June. Banning camping before these plans are in full effect will cause further distress in the upcoming summer heat. While it is appreciated that the winter warming center will now continue throughout May, there may still be people who cannot stay there due to the rules in the building. Not to mention, the winter warming center is not a comfortable environment at all. For folks who are unaware, you are not allowed to lay down in there. You are given a chair to sit in and have to leave by 8:00 a.m. It is loud and uncomfortable and not a year-round option. Is your plan just to arrest, jail, and find people over and over if they cannot stay in a shelter, or to force them into detoxing? Because right now, that seems to be the direction we're headed. And you yourselves have already discussed how that is ineffective. Not to mention, you're all concerned about the budget, yet you would rather spend money to criminalize people instead of just letting them exist in a tent outside. Your actions are contradictory and make it clear that you do not care about the harm you're causing. You're only going to lengthen their homelessness, which doesn't help anyone. Earlier, it was said that none of you want anyone to die on the streets, but I unfortunately do not believe that to be true. Some of you care far more about businesses and profits downtown than you do about people across all of Fargo that are living unsheltered. There are plenty of them out in the heavy rain right now because the winter warming center is not open yet for the night. On the topic of being out in the cold, you mentioned earlier that nobody frosted at this winter. And it needs to be noted that a lot of these folks were kept warm by their community members, not the government. There were multiple blanket and winter clothing drives where loads of items were personally distributed to folks out in the cold. This community kept each other warm. And we, as Fargo residents, demand better from you all. And I encourage you to think about everything I just said as we move into this unfortunate camping ban. Thanks.
Please, on Commissioner Simon updates, Commissioner Strand?
I do have one, Mayor. I believe they'll pull it up on the screen here. You all know we we have a immense amount of work going on at the airport. And part of that progress is they have a new a new logo for the airport. So it's new branding, new messaging. You see the old logo there, and a lot of people thought it looked like the Twin Towers getting hit. So this is this has just evolved, and it hasn't been shown here at our at our commission meetings. But the processes have gone through to look at the the whole messaging, the communications, keeping Fargo in there, whether or not and to what degree you keep Hector. Those things are all nuances. But this is the is there sound to this, or is it just? You might as well turn it on then, please. Sorry. Just one element of what's going on at the airport. If you haven't driven out there to see our new parking ramp, it's a it's a showstopper. And the reaction from the people seeing this, it's just really a game changer to know in the future they don't have to sit out in the winter or come out and pound snow off their car to get into their cars. But it's fun seeing the airport grow the way it is and seeing our community embracing it like they are.
Any commissioners welcome to our tour by Sean Doverstein. It's the parking ramp is relatively finished. But what's really surprising is the remodel part. And I think you'd like to see inside what they're doing. It's a totally different look for our community. Commissioner Colpak?
Yes, I have three slides and one verbal update. And I really like the logo, John. Excuse me, Commissioner Strand.
All right.
Yes, really like it.
And there's a bus out there with it, a bus ramp, sorry.
Okay.
With that logo.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Got a plane flying through our city streets. I'll stop.
So these are three very different updates on the slide, all interesting, I think. So the first from Solid Waste, the city of Fargo Solid Waste Department hosted its annual Earth Day poster contest at Jefferson Elementary, which is the school that we sponsor here at City Hall. And the winning poster is being featured on a billboard at Main Avenue and 32nd Street. It's also appearing on the back of a recycling truck, and it can be seen on truck 169 emptying cardboard containers around Fargo. And Mayor Mahoney and Recycling Supervisor Jen Pickett visited Jefferson Elementary on April 16 for a pizza party with the class and with the student Gracie, who created the winning poster. So congratulations to Gracie.
Yeah, and they ate all the pizza. I didn't even have a piece for myself.
All right, Fargo, this is a very important memorial to to talk about. On the evening of Saturday, May 3, Fargo City Hall in the spirit of the Sandbagger Manio will be illuminated in red to honor National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. This special illumination pays tribute to the courage, sacrifice, and service of firefighters who lost their lives in the line of duty. The lights will reflect our deep respect, remembrance, and gratitude for those who made the ultimate sacrifice to protect others. So thank you. And the last water utility, last week's staff, including me, from the city of Fargo's Water Department, attended the surface water treatment workshop in West Fargo. I was able to attend the opening keynote speaker. It was very good. It's a three-day event held every other year that brings together water professionals from the Dakotas and Minnesota, and it covers a range of technical water treatment plant topics, regulatory challenges, and drinking water projects in the Midwest. Excuse me, our water officials can tell you that treating surface water to use as tap water comes with more stringent EPA regulations and complemented treatment processes. And to Jim Kershaw, who I missed at the conference from Bismarck, big shout out to you. And then the last I wanted to share, if it looks like I spent half the day in the rain, it's because I did. I toured today the 119th wing of the North Dakota Air National Guard and saw the whole facility and was also able to get on the simulator and destroy some things, which really helped me today. So that's my update.
Way to get rid of aggression if we like, eh? Police chief has been working on a fleeing law that we've tried in two years or two sessions in a row. And it looks like that will go past, go to the governor's desk to sign, which he's very pleased about. I want to commend Steve Swanteck because he helped us get that through the legislative body. And it will help our police officers when people flee from them and enforcing the laws. So we're very pleased about that. Commissioner Turnberg?
Just a reminder that we are entering the budget time where we're setting budgets for the next year. And the library has had to close on Sundays just because we didn't have any extra room in our budget last year. So that's something to consider if you want to see your library open again on Sundays, to speak up just as a resident and a taxpayer, and let your wishes be known.
Commissioner Pepcorn? We will just, Chief has got a report. I'm going to give you a five-minute break, then we'll come back. The police chief, we got the Fargo Police Department report.
Five. You said five, right?
Davis Vosk is going to give a report on the 2024 Police Department Annual Report. Chief?
Thank you, Commission. Pleased to present you with our 2024 Annual Report. Really outlines excellent work that our police department team has done over the last year. Very proud of their efforts on a daily basis. There's a lot of really good police work that's being done across our city. And also very proud of our community for their support and partnership as well. It's a key component to keeping Fargo safe. And also continue to be honored to be the leader of this department. So we're making a lot of strides. We are, just as a reminder, also going to have a press conference tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. and Gateway Commons at the PD where we can delve into this data a little more in depth with our media as well. But I'm happy to take questions along the way. Four key things just to hit on this evening briefly is the overall decrease in crime, implementation of some technology, staffing and academy update, our traffic safety team impact, and our officer wellness program. Terms of crime stats, as you can see there, we had a really good 6.8% decrease across the board in all crime compared to 2023. So that's good. We always like to be going in that direction. It doesn't mean that some of our crime categories didn't increase. So we've got some more detailed data here. The homicides, you know, we did have six last year, but over the course of our six years, we averaged five a year. So 2023 was actually a low year in comparison. The only good thing we can say about that is that all of them are cleared. They all have their unique circumstances. Rape, a larger increase in that category, and we're delving into that a little more in depth. But we have identified a few issues with our statute in terms of prosecutor ability to issue charges in a lot of the cases because of the statutory language. But about 54% of those are known persons out of that category.
Mayor, might I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Should you call your there? You had been involved with a few years ago at the state level, the severe backlog of rape testing kits. Is that resolved?
Yeah, I believe they are caught up in partnership with the Attorney General, who's also bolstered up the operations of the crime lab, which I think we're all very happy about. Our process and their process is pretty quick. Robbery is relatively flat compared to last year. Arson is down a bit. Burglary is down. It's a good trend to see that. Motor vehicle theft and shoplifting, I think, when you look at our, we're going to be doing quarterly reports to the media as well. We can present those to the commission also. Quarterly reports by beat in terms of all of these different crime categories. And when you look at what we did in November, when we did our first iteration of that, shoplifting across the city and theft are the highest volume crimes that we're seeing across our city for a variety of reasons, I'm sure. Thank you. Violent crime data, aggravated assaults, simple assaults are both down. The breakdown below is just a subset of that information that relates specifically to domestic ag assaults and domestic simple assaults. One thing that you might pull away from there is that, obviously, we know who the people are in the domestic assaults. But the clearance rates you would think would be higher. A lot of that has to do with some of the nuances of domestic violence, victim cooperation, things of that nature over in the prosecutor's office. But overall, the assaults are down, and that's a good sign as well. Shots fired started a really good downward trend last year, and we're pretty level this year in 2024. A couple more cases, but still well below where we'd been previous years. Those are instances where people are firing guns at things, houses, cars, in the air, et cetera. Very similar to the situation we had over the weekend in one of our downtown taverns where two individuals got into a disagreement. And another, the suspect chased the individual out of the bar, firing shots at him, did not hit him with any bullets, but was also later arrested, and the gun was recovered. So a lot of great police work there as well. Implementation of technology has been a very big key component of our department over the past several years and a big part of our strategic plan. Our real-time crime center is the first fully functioning one in North Dakota. We have a combination of sworn and civilian staff, and we are utilizing them at a greater degree as we are able to continue staffing it to monitor calls for service relative to where camera placement may be, specifically in our downtown area. You may have seen some of our social media posts where we've had officers up in the real-time crime center observe drug activity, and we're able to direct officers to those individuals, and this is all public video, direct officers to that location, and they were able to make arrests. And so one of the things that often frustrates our community and the department is that there, for most misdemeanors, we can't arrest for them unless we the crime occurs in our presence with a few exceptions. And a lot of those types of crimes are misdemeanors. So the implementation of utilizing this with civilian and sworn personnel, sworn cop is seeing the violation, directing other sworn cops there in real time allows us to make those arrests and have much better enforcement success. So we're pretty excited about that. But across the city, this technology has solved homicides, robberies, missing persons, a whole plethora of things. And when we've utilized it also for special events, we have stepped in front of many, many incidents that would have otherwise erupted into some criminal activity, fight, assault, et cetera. It's just been really successful, and we're going to continue to build that out, build that real-time crime center out. But there's a very significant impact for our community from a safety perspective. Academy and staffing, we had two court classes again in 2024, 21 new officers. That was classes six and seven. We currently have just one opening as a result of Captain Helmick taking the position over in Morehead. So other than that, we are at our full authorized strength. As you know, our strategic plan is to get us up to 1.6 officers per thousand, which is married in with our budget request and strategic planning for the public safety sales tax as well. Traffic safety team took the streets in September. Of 24 have had a huge impact on traffic in our city enforcement, education. The dangerous driving has been a big focus for them. And as the mayor said, we're really excited that House Bill 1229 passed the floor today, and will go on to the governor and along with Representative Swanteck, Representative Shower, and actually Copman helped us with this, Pat Heinrich. We had a lot of support on both the House and the Senate side to get this through in our second attempt. That's going to allow us to hold owners of these fleeing vehicles accountable. A large portion, some like 80% of our fleeing vehicles, that don't stop when we try and enforce traffic. We've got the plate. We know who the owner is. They're not stolen. So that will be a really important tool for our traffic safety team to work with. So that's an exciting piece. We were able to get that accomplished. The officer wellness program, also a really important piece for our department and our community as well. We started our wellness coordinator in 2024 through a grant, along with the grant ends at the end of this year. And that's also a budget request to make that position permanent. She's had a huge positive impact on our department. And we really expanded, again, wellness to the point where we are creating a separate wellness unit in the department that's not only working with mental health and physical health and making sure that all our folks are well so they can serve the community, but also the reintegration piece of this. And you may or may not know, but we average 10 to 15 people out of service on any given day due to injury, family medical leave, or military leave. And so when they're off from that on-the-street experience, some of that's very long, some of it's very short, some are recovering from injury, they lose some of their, and depending on where they are in their career, they can lose some of their knowledge, skills, and abilities. And instead of just pushing them right from end of day of being off to back onto the street, best practice is to have a reintegration reintroduction for them to find out if there are any additional training they need, skill sets that they need, and ease them back into that position. That's received a lot of positive response from our staff as well. We've been recognized and asked to present on a lot of our wellness things nationally. And the program is really and the program is really growing. So we're going to create that unit and keep that going. It's really important, and I think it's also a big piece of recruitment and retention for our department as well. Something like this is almost an expected option, I think, for new people who are entering the policing profession today, so we're really excited about that. Last year, of course, we also had the opportunity, through the really gracious support of our community, to go out to Washington, D.C. in honor of Officer Jake Weline, who was killed in the line of duty in July 14th, 2023. Again, while this was a very somber event, it's bittersweet from the perspective of the many personnel that were able to attend and not only give them some closure, but to see the larger picture of policing in our country and the many, many people that actually support what we do and support what they do every day. So a big mental health piece to that as well, and we're certainly appreciative that our folks were able to go out there and honor Jake in that way. And then just going forward, our org chart, not too new here, but we'll be looking to expand our operations, our staffing, so that we've got more personnel in key positions as well as appropriate supervision and oversight in the overall structure of the department. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Strand?
Chief, I'm curious about school resource officers and the placement in the seven school districts that are in the Fargo School District. What about, what about the West Fargo School Districts where they have more Fargo residents in the West Fargo School Districts than they have West Fargo residents in the West Fargo School District? Who services them with school resource officers?
West Fargo PD does, and that's one of those political anomalies, but you're correct.
But they do have SROs?
Yes.
But they're from the city of West Fargo side?
Yes.
Even though they're in the city of Fargo?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Good report. There's no resident comments tonight. We are adjourned.